I call to order a regular meeting of the President and Board of Trustees of Machesney Park, Illinois for Tuesday, September 8th, 2015. Please stand for invocation led by Pastor Rob Lindzor from our First Born Ministry, and Pledge of Allegiance led by Troop 206. Their leader is Sue Ewald, and they are getting their community merit badge for this.
Lord, we ask you to bless us tonight, Lord. We ask you to bless our community. We ask that you would help us to be guided by a spirit of servitude and meekness as we come together, Lord. Let any squabbles or any differences between us be laid aside for the betterment of our community and the people therein. Lord, we pray this in your precious name, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
For everyone joining in the court.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will a clerk take a roll call, please?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
Thank you, Lord. We have a quorum. Next is approval of minutes from August 17th, 2015, board meeting. I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or changes? I see none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have treasurer's report. Tom Yell.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report reflects what the village received in building Machesney Road funds of $312,373.87, and the total of all funds as of August 31st was $9,77,136. Also, the annual treasurer's report has been completed and is available at the back table. It also will be published as required by law.
Thank you, Tom. I entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report. So moved. I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or changes? I hear none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Treasurer's report has been accepted. Next, we have communications. Lloyd Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one thing this evening, and that is you are presenting a proclamation. And it's right here. And accepting on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution is Alice Uphouse. Yes, please. I'm sorry. Trustee Snodgrass will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in the republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2015, marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Jerry Boland, Mayor of the Village of Machesney Park, do proclaim the days of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in Machesney Park, and encourage all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves.
Also, thank you for coming and accepting this proclamation tonight.
We almost lost it here.
Yeah, we almost did, anyway. It's an honor to have you with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I have a couple of remarks, if I may, please.
I want to give you a little bit of information. Ms. Gertrude Keraway, while President of our NSDAR was responsible for the annual designation of September 17th through the 23rd for Constitution Week, the DAR made its own resolution for Constitution Week, and that was adopted in April 21st, 1955. The members of the United States Congress received the DAR resolution on June 7th of 1955. The resolution was discussed in the Senate. The first resolution to observe Constitution Week was made June 14th, 1955 by then Senator William Nolan of California. Following the passage, the resolution by both Houses of Congress, President Eisenhower issued his proclamation on August 19th, 1955. The first observance of Constitution Week was so successful that on January 5th of 1956, Senator Nolan introduced a Senate joint resolution to have the President designate September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. The resolution was adopted on July 23rd, 1956, and was signed into public law on August 2nd of 1956. I have a quote I'd like to read, if I may. "Our safety, our liberty depends upon preserving the Constitution of the United States. The people of the United States are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow men who pervert the Constitution." That was by Abraham Lincoln. As honorary Rockford Chapter Regent, I personally thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And for the trustees for supporting all the efforts that our Rockford Chapter works so hard to do in Winnebago County. Thank you. See you in December.
Okay.
And that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lord. Next, we have warrants trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Administration Finance Committee met and approved warrants totaling $844,923.98, and I move for their passage.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the warrants. Are there any discussions or changes? I see none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays.
Thank you, Lord. The warrants have been approved. Next, we have administrative reports. On our Planning and Zoning Commission, there's two committee members' terms that are expiring in September. So tonight, I place a nomination for reappointment to Planning and Zoning Commission. Dave Harmon for a five-year term expiring September 2020, and Shane Kleinger for a five-year term expiring September 2020, and I'll be bringing it to the board on 9/21/15, asking for a motion to approve that. Okay, next, we have Attorney Green.
I have no report tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Green. Next, we have Human Resource and Accounting Manager, Michelle Johansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I prepared a memo and distributed to the trustees summarizing the fiscal year 14-15 results, audited financial results. The general fund is showing a $608,000 surplus for the year. And tonight, we have with us Carla, who is a partner on the job for the village from Sickich, and she'll just be presenting the audit for you tonight. Carla?
Thank you. We issued four different reports, and I'd just like to highlight a few items in each of those and then open it up to any questions that you might have. The largest of the documents you received is the annual financial report, and that contains all the financial information for the village for the year. If you turn to page one, this is the independent auditor's report. Even though we assist you in preparing your annual financial report, this is the only part of that report that belongs to us as auditors. In that report, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is typically referred to as a clean opinion. It's the type of opinion you want. It means that there's no misstatements contained in your financial statements that we audited for the fiscal year. And then if you turn to the schedules that are marked MDNA at the bottom with various page numbers, this is the management's discussion and analysis that is prepared by your management. It highlights the current year financial results, and it'll also detail any planned long-term capital improvements or any long-term debt issues that are contemplated. If you turn to page four, this statement is prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting and is really a consolidated financial position of the village as a whole. It presents all your assets, liabilities, and net position, including long-term assets and long-term liabilities. At the bottom, we detail your net position, which is your equity, and they're categorized in various different segments. Your net investment in capital assets is your capital assets, net of any capital-related debt, and at the end of the year, that was $56,122,000. Below that is restricted, that part of your net position is restricted by various tax levies and other, if donors have restrictions on how you can spend money, then the net position related to that has to be reported as restricted. For the year, that totaled $2,200,000. And then the next category is referred to as unrestricted. That means that's your net position that can be spent on anything that the village would choose. At the end of the year, that unrestricted net position was $6,800,000. And then if you turn to page five, this is your statement of revenues and expenditures presented on an accrual basis for the village as a whole, and there was a positive change in net position for fiscal year 15 in the amount of $3,700,000. Pages six through 10 present your governmental funds, which are presented on a modified accrual basis, which means you record receivables that you're going to receive within 60 days and any payables that you will be paying out within the next 60 days. And recognizing revenue on that basis, fund balance for all of the funds resulted in an increase of $2,752,000. And then I turn next to what's referred to on the cover as the board communication. There are several documents contained in this report. The first is our required communications, beginning on page two. I just want to highlight a few items in that report. If there were any new accounting policies or implementation of any new standards, we'd report that to you. However, there were none for fiscal year 2015. Typically, if there's any accounting estimates contained in the report that we feel could change within the coming year, we report that to you as a board. We don't feel that there were any estimates contained in the annual financial report that would change within one year. And then we are also required to report any corrected misstatements that are identified during the audit, or any uncorrected misstatements that management decided not to reflect in the financial statements. I'm happy to report that we identified none. So the report that you're looking at was the information that was provided to us by management. Starting on page six is our management letter. As part of the audit, we review your key internal controls to make sure that there's no higher audit risks that we need to identify and address during our audit. We're not doing an internal control audit, so there might be internal controls that we don't look at, and there could be deficiencies there that we don't identify. But for your key controls that we reviewed, we did not identify any internal control deficiencies for this year. And then we also review any items that we had noted in our management letter for the prior year. I'm happy to report that both of those items were corrected in the current year. Last year, there was some error in the calculation of depreciation that was corrected for prior years, and that did not occur during the year. And then we had provided some opportunities in order to enhance your segregation of duties. Those were implemented by management. The third report is your single audit report. Whenever your federal awards exceed $500,000 for any given year, you're required to have a single audit. It's a compliance audit that helps the federal government monitor those awards that they're providing to local governments. During the year, you had $1,655,000 in total federal awards. We audited one program and audited 88% of that award. We had no internal control or compliance findings as a result of that audit. And then the final report that we issued is referred to as your TIF report. It's a compliance report required by the Illinois compiled statutes. Whenever you have a TIF district where the cumulative property tax revenue exceeds $100,000, we have to review for compliance with the Illinois compiled statutes, that the money's being spent properly. And we noted no instances of noncompliance. I'd open it up to any questions that anyone has. Okay. Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Any motion? Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the audit and place it on file. So moved. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? I hear trustee Wilson.
I would just like to say, working with Michelle is incredible. She always has answers, and she really knows her stuff. Thank you, Michelle.
Diddle that, too. Good job. Are there any more comments? Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion to accept the audit and place on file has been approved. Next, we have our new Harlem High School steward liaison, Nick McCormick.
Thank you, Your Honor. On September 25th, we have the Harlem Veteran Documentary Football Game, which is just a program that is run through Harlem High School, and it'll be a veteran-based game, and we'll invite all of them that we know of in the community for free admission and free concessions and a special halftime show. All freshman sophomore play tryouts have concluded. Harlem High School has created its first United Nations model team this year to compete in the Nick 10 Championship in April, and Voices of Harlem Tryouts just began last Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Village Engineers, not here. Okay. Next, we have Public Safety Supervisor, Sergeant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. From August 14th through September 3rd, there were 1,221 calls for service in the village, 363 reports taken, with 401 arrests. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Doug. Next, we have Public Works Superintendent, Chad Hunter.
Thank you, Your Honor. With summer coming to an end, I just wanted to give a quick update on salt pricing for this year's winter. In the past, the village has always relied on the state joint bid process to obtain its pricing for its road salt. As many of you know, last year, when bids were received, the village, as well as a handful of other communities, were left off the state bid due to the bidder's inability to fulfill the full quantity the state was requesting. The village's omission from the state bid left us scrambling, along with a handful of other communities, to try to secure salt for the season. Last year, the village was able to secure salt at a price of $104.62 a ton. This price was considerably higher than years past due to the quantity requested and the high demand for salt at the time. Due to the outcome of last year's state bid, the village has decided to go another route and team up with a group headed by Winnebago County to try to receive a lower and more reliable salt price. The county bids out salt as a group for a number of area communities, including Loves Park, Rockton, South Beloit, Harlem Township, and Roscoe Township. Through the bid process with the county, the village was able to secure a salt price for this year of $71.82 for this year's winter season. Teaming up with the county allows the village the security of not being left off of a bid, but still having the bulk purchasing power, buying with the surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Next, we have committee and trustee reports. Do we have any reports this evening? I'll start with trustee Snodgrass, come this way.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm actually kind of reporting on something else, but the day is finally here. On Saturday, Rock Valley College will celebrate its 50th anniversary. We've been planning for over a year. There's games, there's exhibits, there's a 5K race first thing in the morning, and then we'll have bands from noon until nine, and then we'll end the night with a fireworks display. I just want to invite everyone in the community to come out and celebrate 50 years of our community college. It's going to be a great day.
Thank you, Ron. Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Jake for the two zoning issues that quickly getting back to me and the resolve on that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johnson. Trustee Wilson.
Your Honor, the Planning and Economic Development Committee met this evening and will be moving two resolutions forward to the September 21st meeting.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Administration Finance Committee met and reviewed and recommended approval of warrants, which have been approved, and we also approved the extension of the sheriff's contract, which will be on tonight's agenda. On a personal note, yesterday, I was able to once again walk in the Labor Day Parade with my fellow Unis, and we had a good time. It was a great turnout.
Thank you, trustee Beck. Are there any more reports this evening? I see none. Next, we have the consent agenda. Would the staff please present all items under the consent agenda for the record?
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda consists of item A, Ordinance 32-15. It's a zoning map amendment for various parcels in the North Shore Estates from R2 to R1 zoning. This is a second reading. Item B is Ordinance 33-15, also a zoning map amendment in North Shore Estates, Forest Creek, and Forest Hills Farms subdivisions, changing that zoning from R3 to R1 residential. Again, second reading. Item C is Ordinance 36-15, a special use permit for outdoor storage at HMC Products, 7165 Greenlee Drive, second reading. And item D, Ordinance 38-15, text amendment to the commercial zoning category for medical uses, providing for medical and dental clinics and outpatient medical facilities to be permitted uses, hospital, medical clinics, and facilities with inpatient care to be special use, and then hospitals, inpatient medical facilities, methadone, and needle exchange clinics to be special use. All four of those items had recommended positive approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item E is Resolution 56R-15, a resolution authorizing execution of the hazardous mitigation grant program for the flood buyout grant agreement with FEMA. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any items a board member would like to be removed from the consent agenda or considered separately? I see none. The consent agenda is accepted as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Are there any trustees' discussions? I see none. A clerk take roll call.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Ayes.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Lord. The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have New Business, Resolution 26-R-15, authorize policing services contract renewal. I entertain a motion to adopt. So moved. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second? I have a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. You have in front of you a draft agreement for policing services with the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department, providing contract year beginning May 1 of 2015 extending through April of next year. There are three paragraphs that have been changed in this most recent draft. The first one being paragraph three that identifies the number of personnel, and we're identifying a total of 29 sworn officers. And bear with me. Paragraph 10 identifies a total compensation for the contract year of $3,381,575.34. And finally, we have added a new paragraph, paragraph 15, which identifies that all fees, fines, penalties, miscellaneous revenue generated by the officers that are assigned to Machesney Park Division are due and payable to the village and are to be forwarded to the village and recouped by the village. And then it further goes in detail to identify that impound fees set at $350 are also forwarded to the village specifically. I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any trustee discussions? Trustee Snodgrass.
My main question is, if this went into effect in April, why are we getting it in
Historically, the village has adopted the contract after the budget has been arrived at, and then it's forwarded to the county. The county, in the last couple of years, has taken, you know, sometimes until September, early fall to get it approved. This year, knowing that there was that kind of delay at the county level, we didn't bring it forward immediately. So, you know, in the future, we'll be getting it in here, you know, roughly after the budget is adopted and hopefully approved by May 1.
Thank you.
Are there any more discussions? I see none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Lord. Resolution 26-R-15 has been adopted. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to make a public comment? Step to the podium, state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes or less, please, and direct all your comments to the chair only. I do not answer direct questions. Staff may follow up if I direct them to.
Okay. GeorgeProwl10045, Jetson Drive. There's a law in the village saying you can't park opposite of somebody's driveway. You can't park in no parking zone. We all have the right to back out of our driveway, all but me, for five days in a row, certain times of the day. I brought some pictures. If the mayor let me, they can look at them all. Some show here where cars are parked in no parking zone. This car's got me blocked. This one's got me blocked. Oh, these got me blocked. This one here is blocking the fire and hiring. I didn't get, that's taken with this camera, which ain't good, but it did pretty good. And you got the neighborhood watching that belong to the support. So, what I came up here for, I want the right to back out of my driveway, or the freedom to back out of my driveway whenever I want to. Now, this is only during school days. And it starts about 2:22 PM, okay? And then it's over after that. It starts at that time, but they start lining up. There is a van, I didn't get a picture of it. State law says now you can't throw cigarette butts out on the street. She keeps throwing the cigarette butts out, okay? I can pick up the cigarette bag, put it in the bag, give it to the police, and write down the license plate number. I don't know, what, you give them a ticket for that?
Please keep your questions to the chair.
Yeah. And so I don't know what you do, give them a checket. But I should have the right, freedom to back out of my driveway. Now, anybody want to look at them? I'm gonna leave them with Doug. So, and that's about it for, oh, on the burning thing that Steve Johnson brought up in the last meeting. If I remember right, I think with 60% of the people in the village, they put it to a right, I think with 60% of the people in the village, they put it to the vote, and the people wanted it to, back then, Steve. But today, because of Steve's point, people are getting older, and the smoke is bad. So maybe you have to put it on the ballot again. I don't know, in 2016. I think that's it.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make a public comment? I see none. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any oppose? We are adjourned.